Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, August 13th, 2018. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for an alumni of our Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'll move into the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes, item 3.1. Can I get a motion to adopt that set of minutes? councillor Thompson.
I would move that councillor see the minutes of the city council meeting held Monday, July 16th, 2018 as presented.
Thanks very much councillor Thompson. Are there any errors or omissions? Looks like councillor O'Toole had his hands full with a pretty long meeting and lots of readings of different land use bylaw amendments and area structure plans. Thanks very much councillor O'Toole for stepping in and handling chairing duties for that meeting. Are there any errors or omissions to correct? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote to adopt that set of minutes. Please vote. Thank you. I think I'm looking for one more councillor. Just make sure. Thank you. That motion carries and then we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. councillor Palat.
Thanks mayor Given. I just make a motion that council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much councillor Palat. Any discussion or debate on the agenda as recommended? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries and that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have at every regular scheduled city council meeting. It's an opportunity for the community to come forward and address council on any community related matters, as long as they're not the subject of a public hearing. We have a couple of public hearings this evening and so if you're here for anything related to Arbor Hills, we'd ask you to wait until we get to the public hearing portion of the agenda, although those of you that are here for that probably know the routine by now. We do have a couple of delegations that let us know ahead of time that they were planning on attending and so we'll start first with the representatives from the Alberta Summer Games Board. So if you'd do us the favor of introducing yourself, after the last couple of years, I'm sure everybody knows you, but...
I hope so. Yeah. Hi, I'm Lindsay McNeil and I'm the games manager for the 2018 Alberta Summer Games.
And Lionel Robbins, chair for the games.
Welcome, welcome to you both.
Thanks.
Have you caught up on your sleep?
No.
We're finally getting caught up, yeah. So this is kind of what our first after games follow-up and we thought we'd kind of make it a celebratory event, I think as you referred to it, a bit of a victory lap. I think the games absolutely went off fantastic, so I have some thanks to give to people in the room and outside the room. And we have a few presentations for you. I want to put out a special recognition for the large number of city employees who came out. The list was long, as we were scrambling to get criminal background checks for everybody all at once, so it was a pretty impressive list. So thank you for really promoting and pushing that for your communications department to get that out there, that the need was there. We had set a minimum number of 1,200 volunteers which allowed for nobody calling in sick or no-showing and everything else and we ended up with close to 1,500, so it gave us the flexibility to have the no-shows, which there were a few, like a whole bunch of them not showing up Thursday night in the middle of pouring rain, but we got through it. Yeah, I mean, just the city coming, stepping up to the plate. I have some individual thanks that I just wanted to give publicly. Lindsay and Kelvin with the parks operations, fantastic, can't say enough about them. They really stepped up big time, just getting some of the fields and the other services ready on last minute notice. Jim and Tracy at East Link were very instrumental in helping us organize even parts of the games that weren't part of East Link Center, just being very helpful along the way. Scott and his team at Revolution Place, we certainly challenged them as 1,500 athletes converged on Revolution Place for the school dance. We had budgeted for 500, so thanks to the RCMPAC at the back of the room too for showing up and providing extra security as they were climbing over the rafters and up into the stands and everything else. It was crazy and we loved every minute of it. Of course Karen, who's here today, Karen McGriskin for being our city liaison, she was great in getting stuff done. She's definitely a doer, so communicating, getting us answers when we needed them quickly, working closely with Katie Bevendorf, who represented you as the city as well as sat on our board. The whole city administrative team, the communications department, everybody was just on task. It was genuinely felt like the city actually wanted the games. And I see that in jest, because when we, I think I mentioned when we went to the previous games in La Duque, we got the feeling that outside of the four block radius of the games, half the city didn't even know the games were happening. And our goal was really to involve the entire city in the games and get people into it and all the cultural activities, so it was great. Council members, we had several council members volunteering, so thank you to all of you. I saw trays being cleaned and food prepared and people getting soaked in the rain, helping people get seats for the ceremonies and everything else, so it was nice to see councillors in the regular volunteer positions, actually getting wet and dirty with the rest of us and not just watching everybody else work, so that was very encouraging. Yeah, I guess, I mean, our goal was making the games recognized throughout the whole area, which I think we did. Alberta Sport Connection actually made a few comments afterwards, one of which was they were mildly surprised at how well we pulled off a two-host community game. They've done several and they said they don't usually go that smooth, so I know that the city and the county at times have had challenges with each other and getting things done between each other, but I think the way that the two communities came together and put this on was noticeable, even from the Alberta Sport Connections and the outside delegates commented on how well it seemed like the city and the county were working as one, so that was very well done. And just pushing the envelope, I think we made Grand Prairie our own games. When ASC first sat down with us and informed us that their manual was to represent 90% of the games and the other 10% was going to be Grand Prairie's take on the games, and I think we pushed that to about a 50/50 by the time we were done. And they pushed back and they pushed back throughout the entire two-year process. They kept saying, "No, no, we have a manual, this is the way it's always been done," and we said, "No, no, we want to do it the way Grand Prairie would do it." And it actually got to the point where, once they recognized how well we had pulled it off, they invited us to come to the Alberta Sport Connection board meeting and all the board members were asking tons of questions specifically to that and they're actually talking about changing a lot of the things that are in their 30-year-old manual to acknowledge that the times are changing and maybe that 90% manual thing just isn't relevant anymore. So I think we've really set a bar that hopefully the other districts will have a hard time following, so. As I said, we're not supposed to say it was the best games ever, but it was the best games ever, so. So thanks again. From a financial point of view, obviously we're still doing the books. We actually still have one more casino to do, so we're literally still fundraising, but they gave us a free one, so we're gonna take it and go down to Edmonton and run one more. That all goes to the legacy fund, as you guys know. Your legacy fund has been put to very good use. The new volleyball courts are firmly in play, which we got a grant of 50% of that from the province through the CFP grants, so you have $150,000 new upgrade to the volleyball courts. The new hammer throw cage looked fantastic, worked well, and apparently was the only thing keeping us from being able to host provincial track and field tournaments in Grand Prairie, so from a legacy point of view, I think for the next 20 years, you're gonna be able to see more events just because of that investment, so. I don't have exact numbers, there's probably still a little more money on the table from the legacy fund, so once we have it, we'll obviously come to you guys and say, you know, what do we do with the rest of it, whether it's some more facility improvements or we put it towards some youth sport development or something, but we'll, once we have the dollars and cents figured out, we'll bring it to your attention. Other than that, we just have a few gifts. Atco was nice enough to actually take some of the torches from the relay and have them mounted for the host community, so we were hoping to have Atco here today, but we just couldn't make it happen, but on behalf of Atco, I wanted to present this torch, so I'll do that in a moment to put up. I know it was already upstairs, but this is kind of the official. We then also have, RBC was the ones that paid for all the medals, which have gotten a lot of critical acclaim, so they put together a gold, silver, bronze for both host communities as well. And of course, they didn't tell us they were doing that, so we did the same thing and we have a three medal set for you as well on behalf of the board for the games, just to thank you guys for your support and your backing for the games, so. I don't know if you want me to physically give them to you now or just tell you I have them for you and I'll give them to you later, but we can maybe do some photo ops on the break or something, but...
Sure, sure. Yeah, I think that'd be perfect and if anything, I think the thanks really is to Lionel, you and your entire team of employees and volunteers throughout the community. There's a huge army of volunteers that came together at the, you know, in the end to put on the games, but there's also that army of volunteers that works for a couple of years in advance of a big event like this and so I don't want it to go unsaid that we appreciate the time that each of you have committed out of your lives to take on this volunteer commitment and certainly pass that on to the rest of your team. You did Grand Prairie proud.
I will, thank you. And then if there's any questions with the respect to the financials or the outcome of the games from anyone, I'll take some questions.
Any other questions for the delegation? No? councillor O'Toole?
Just a big thank you for your families putting up with your lack of being around, okay? The Grand Prairie is rewarded very much for the time that you guys took away from your families, so thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Absolutely. councillor Minhas.
Thank you very much, mayor Bill Given. Lionel, thanks very much, you've done a great job. I see your pain and all the things and your family and all the team you put together. It was a great thing what you have done and you too. So you guys have done great stuff for the Grand Prairie, brought the name up for the sports. Love it, thank you.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thanks very much. Any other questions for the delegation? Seeing nobody, then thanks very much Lionel. I wonder, actually, I know that councillor O'Toole attended on my behalf pretty much all of the games events and I wonder if councillor O'Toole maybe if he'd accept the presentation of the torch from the group for photo op.
Sure, absolutely.
are working for years in advance, those who came together in the games and thanks very much to everybody in Grand Prairie who made the games the greatest Alberta Summer Games yet, and we're allowed to say that here in Grand Prairie. And we'll let the next community try and meet the bar that you and your team have set. Great job. The next delegation that let us know ahead of time that they're gonna be here is the representatives from the Grand Prairie Stompied. I think I can guess which one that is. If you'd like to make your way to the front, introduce yourself. Trevor, good to see you.
Thank you, mayor Given. Thank you councillors for having us today. I just wanted to be front and present if there was any questions in the upcoming grant application that we submitted.
So this is with respect to the large-scale tourism funding application. It's on our council, it's on our agenda as item 9.1.3. That's $75,000 to the Grand Prairie Stompied for the 2018 event, which has happened, obviously. So were there any questions for the delegation? councillor O'Toole?
Yeah, well, thank you for putting an application in. I was just wondering what that money would, what purpose would it serve for your board and the event itself?
With the event post now, we're looking for the future. We have put a marketing plan together for the next three years, which we would like to put forward, which the monies would be utilized for. We've definitely upped our attendance probably about 8 to 10% this year over past years by hiring our marketing team that we hired locally. They've done a great job for us and we're looking to have a presence throughout the rest of the year, not just focusing on the two or three months before our actual show, so gaining more popularity to our region and our city. Focusing on, you know, such places as our northern visitors from British Columbia, as well as Yukon and Northwest Territories, and hopefully when we put this marketing plan together, in the next couple of years, we also want to push more towards the United States as well, get a lot of those cowboys and fans to come up and enjoy our beautiful country up here and see what we're doing and to promote our Western way of life and our heritage.
Awesome, thanks very much, thanks councillor O'Toole. Any other questions for the delegation? Trevor, I know the last couple of years for the Stompied were kind of skinny and were pretty challenging. How did this year compare to the last couple of years?
Well, with, much like Lionel, we're not quite done yet, mayor Given. Our year-end is actually at the end of this month. We still have, you know, minimal payables and yet some monies to come in, so until that's all kind of gone through by our accountants, I believe we had a successful year, but with that being said, I don't want to speak out of turn and without prior knowledge to what we're doing there, so...
Until somebody does all the math?
That's right, yeah.
Fair enough. Any other questions for the delegation? Okay, thanks very much for being available to council this evening as we discuss this a little bit later on in our agenda and you know where it is in the package and so thanks for giving council the opportunity to ask any questions, had they had any?
Awesome, thank you so much, you guys.
Okay, and so that was the extent of the delegations that had let us know in advance that they wished to speak to council. There is an opportunity for anyone from the community to come and speak to council on any community-related matter, as I related before, and so we have that. With our procedure bylaw, it does have a couple of caveats. We ask people to try and keep it to about five minutes and generally we ask for no more than two speakers on any one topic, so is there anybody else that wished to come forward and address council on any community-related matter? Sure, if you'd like to come forward. Sure, so you sort of saw the routine there, we'll just ask you to introduce yourself for recording secretary and for council and for people watching online and on YouTube. Welcome.
Sure. Oh, that's really loud, okay. Hi, my name's Caitlin Card and I'm a founding board member of the Bear Creek Folk Music Festival. Sarah, the producer of the festival, and Gordy Hackstead, the president, send their regrets, they're still about 20 minutes out of town from a full day of meetings in Edmonton regarding the festival, so they sent me as their alternate in their stead, so I'm here to give an update with the festival coming up on Friday about how things are going and also to come give the city a huge thanks for all the year-round support and the support in the last three years that's been given, so...
And not to take from your, the role that you're about to go on, but you have somebody else with you.
Oh yes, I'm so sorry. So this is Whitney Card, she's my...
My other card.
She's the other card sister. She's here just as a support, she's also a volunteer, one of many for the festival. So just to give you some updates, the festival starts this Friday, it's a three-day event for those of you who don't know, with over 30 acts coming from all over the world and in Canada and local acts as well. The site transformation's already begun, thanks to our hard-working team. So we have an army of 450 volunteers this year, putting in over 20,000 person-hours to make the whole thing happen. Much like the Alberta Summer Games, we're just overwhelmed by the community support that's been seen for this event. It would not be possible without all of those people and this is such an amazing city for volunteerism, the spirit of volunteerism really is beautiful in the city of Grand Prairie. We're also happy to say that two weeks ago, we surpassed last year's total ticket sales for the festival and we, so we're still selling and of course closer to the festival, ticket sales actually accelerate as lots of people buy at the last minute and at the door. Our Saturday night looks like it will sell out, there's still tickets available. Our sponsorship numbers are up this year, we have over 80 sponsors, over 90% of them are local and we're very proud of that. Over 35% of our attendees last year were from outside of 100 kilometers away from the city, so we're so happy that the festival's helping to showcase to others from outside the city just how great Grand Prairie and especially the Musca Cebi Park is to spend time in. We have attendees from as far away as Texas, Nova Scotia, Northwest Territories. Our community outreach program provided 300 complimentary tickets to Odyssey House, Serenity Place, and Child and Family Services, so we're very proud of that as well. We've reached some international attention and recognition from within the industry and the Bear Creek Folk Music Festival, and Sarah personally has been invited as a delegate to some major international musical conferences this year, and that's helped her build her diverse lineup, so we're really happy about that. And also, we're also happy to say that we've been busy year-round as a not-for-profit society, so we have a fundraiser concert series that runs year-round at the Grand Prairie Live Theatre. We've been running bi-weekly open mics for most of the year, they're fundraisers for the festival, and they've been a great way for us to not only fundraise, but they've actually been just an amazing way for us to connect with the local music community and get people together, give some exposure to local acts, and two of the artist book this year were actually recruited from those open mics, so that operates year-round and we've been, as a society, busy every month of the year, running events leading up to the festival. Also, we had, this year we ran our second onstage showcase in partnership with the Arts Touring Alliance of Alberta, and we had a handful of local artists perform to and receive feedback from key industry personnel, which will hopefully help grow their musical careers in the future. And we're also extremely pleased to announce that this year, we're adding a Thursday, Thursday night free festival kickoff party downtown. Some of you may have heard about that already, it's in partnership with the Downtown Association and Better Than Fresno, we're incredibly thankful for their partnership and support there as well. So that's this Thursday night, it's free, anybody can come, there's live music, local acts and some acts, out-of-town acts from the festival as well. So with all of that said, now that you have an update of what's going on with the festival, we just want to thank the city so much from the bottom of our hearts for all of the support that's been provided in the last few years and this year. Thank you to city staff, to the councillors, past and present. We are overwhelmed and just so grateful for everything you've done for us. This event would not have been possible without you and our attendees, thank you. Our 450-person volunteer army thanks you from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much ladies, certainly appreciate the presentation and appreciate the fact that you're stepping in, sort of have a feeling that might, some of that might have been emailed from the road to give you some speaking notes and you did a great job. Any questions for the delegation? councillor Clayton?
Thanks, mayor Given. I noticed that some of your setup has already started, it's great to get a jump on it. I just thought it might be helpful for pedestrians in the Musca Cebi area if there was some signage. I know a lot of people walk in the College Park area, until they get to the bottom of the hill, they wouldn't realize that they couldn't get through, so it was brought to my attention today, so if you could maybe put some signage up at alternate route or even at the beginning of some of the streets, put some signage up so that people know they have to go around to the end to the college or something, because there's a lot of walking traffic that I saw walking down, walking all the way back today, and I'd hate people to sort of start climbing your fences to get around them, so it might just be sort of a tidbit of advice sort of to communicate that to people.
Absolutely, I'll pass, I'll be sure to pass that on to our production manager and also we do have volunteer night security...
Awesome.
...who can, who are very communicative and friendly and can help people find their way as well and make sure they're able to get through.
Thanks councillor Clayton. Any other questions for the delegation? Nope, seeing none, then thanks very much ladies for being here this evening to make a presentation.
Thank you so much.
Hey, was there anybody else that wished to come forward and address council on any community-related matter, again, as long as it's not the subject of a public hearing? Don't see anybody else coming forward, so yeah, sure, if you'd like to come forward, ma'am. You've sort of seen the routine a couple of times, I'll ask you to introduce yourself and your name for a recording secretary and we'll...
I'm Diane Onward from the Mount Uneverhood Association.
Sure, hello Diane.
And I know that there's a huge amount of people here that are just strictly, we need some direction to the city bylaw, RCMP, as to the criminal activity that's going on in this city right now. We have, over at Rotary Park, you have tents, people that have stolen bikes...
Diane, your friend hasn't introduced himself.
Okay, go ahead.
So we ask everybody that attends that's...
Sorry, I didn't come organized for this, but we have quite a concern in the community here.
The question that I asked was if you could introduce, we just ask everyone that attends.
I'm Kelly Larson.
Thank you very much, Kelly.
Okay, I'm one of the people who lived in this community and I've lived here 20 years, and I don't know if anybody realizes how terrible it is right now. There's a lot of things happening over at Rotary House, I'm not pointing a finger at all those people, make that clear, but I don't know if you've noticed like the bike chop shop out front, the guys, you know, you gotta be fairly blind, you can drive up 101st Street and you see guys that have stole stuff, they got bikes full of stuff and you know damn well that they don't own it. There's issues over at the Rotary, what do you call it, the soccer pitch, there's people hanging around there, there's break-ins every day, there's vehicles getting broken into, there's vehicles being stolen and it's getting out of hand, something needs to be done about this.
We would just like some direction from the city as to what they're going to do to combat this, like we've got our associations and we do our walkthroughs and we just find it heavy on us as an association and members of the community that we have to be the ones out there confronting the ones that are doing this stealing or living in the trees, and some of them aren't very pleasant, so we would just like some direction as to what is going to take place to try to combat and bring that back under control.
Okay, thank you.
Across the street from me, for instance, there's a young woman who's got two little kids, she lives alone. She has her lights on from 8 o'clock at night till 7:00 in the morning. If you get up and look out, she's got her lights on, all her lights on in her house, her back lights are on, she doesn't know what to do, she's scared. Her car's been broken into four or five times this summer and I know lock the car, she does, it doesn't matter, and she's scared, and that's only one of many people. I know several people, some people in Avondale, they're scared, they live alone, they lock themselves in the house at night, they don't go out in the yard and do anything, because these people are around, you can pick them out.
Thanks very much for your presentation, thanks very much. Was there anybody else that wished to come forward to address council on this or any other community matter? Not seeing anybody else coming forward, we'll close the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that exists at every regular city council meeting, we're here every two weeks, but we'll move into our public hearings. Our next item on the agenda was item 6.1, the Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan Amendment. We'll call this public hearing to order and we'll look to administration for an introduction.
Thank you, mayor Given and members of city council. The next item for council's consideration is an application to amend the Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan, the Arbor Hills 2 Outline Plan and the Land Use Bylaw. The proposed amendments, if adopted, will facilitate the continued development of single detached homes in the Arbor Hills Plan area of the city. The subject property which is shown on screen in yellow is located on the north side of the city in the existing Arbor Hills 2 Outline Plan area. The property is currently undeveloped, it's vacant, is approximately 2.86 hectares large and is free from any major forms of vegetation. Access to the site is achieved via Arbor Hills Boulevard to the east and 132nd Avenue to the southwest. A large linear municipal reserve trail system is located slightly north of the subject property, which spans the entire plan area from east to west where it eventually terminates in the southwest corner. The Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan and the Arbor Hills 2 Outline Plan contain future land use designations which influence the future zoning of land within their boundaries. In order to justify a change in zoning, applicants are required to ensure that future zoning is consistent with any applicable statutory plans affecting their property. In this instance, the applicant is seeking to rezone the subject property from general commercial to general residential. Because the Arbor Hills ASP and the Arbor Hills 2 OP currently designate the subject property as commercial, the applicant is required to redesignate their property to low-density residential designation in both plans prior to receiving rezoning approval. When we consider the municipal development plan, which is the city's primary land use planning document, we find that the plan encourages efficient and effective use of land so the city can meet the needs of future growth. The applicant has advised the city that commercial land in this area has been somewhat over-prescribed and the development of the subject property would likely... and the development of the subject property would likely be expedited with a change in zoning to a general residential designation. So with that being said, the proposed application maintains the intent and the vision of the city's long-term growth management objectives contained in the municipal development plan. When administration reviews a proposal like this, another major factor we consider is how the proposed land use will affect neighboring land uses and how neighboring land uses will affect the proposed land use. Shown on screen is a snapshot of the existing land use zoning in the area. The lands to the north, south, and west of the subject property are all zoned resident, general residential, which is represented on screen as RG. By adding an additional 2.86 hectares of general residential to the neighborhood, administration does not anticipate any negative land use impacts in or around the neighborhood. Any concerns regarding the proximity to 132nd Avenue for things like noise or traffic will be addressed through our engineering standards for arterial roadways, which includes a four-and-a-half-meter-wide boulevard, a three-meter-wide cycling trail, and a noise attenuation berm. Regarding municipal reserve, when the city adopts new outline plans for residential neighborhoods, administration typically recommends that council request 10% of the net developable plan area for things like parks and trail systems. When the city adopted the Arbor Hills 2 Outline Plan in 2013, council did just that. They took 10% of the net developable plan area. Because the applicants would be increasing the amount of residential development within the plan area as part of this application, they've offered to provide an additional 0.13 hectares of municipal reserve to help the proposed development function properly. The proposed park helps to avoid the creation of double-fronting lots in the middle of the subdivision, is wide enough to accommodate a three-meter-wide linear municipal reserve trail, and will include amenities such as benches and even the possibility of an edible orchard. During the initial department circulation, our Parks Department advised us that edible orchards don't tend to succeed in larger parks where things like soccer balls and larger toys are being used, just because the, the impact on the park is much greater. And so with that, Parks advised us that when we propose a micro park, like, has been proposed for this application, they often suit themselves well to the idea of an edible orchard because of the likelihood that they'll concede or succeed over the long term. This application was advertised to property owners within a 60-meter radius of the subject property through an individual mail-out. Two property signs were placed on the property at high-traffic locations to advise the public of the public hearing as well as the application itself. And the, and two ads were also run in the Daily Herald Tribune advertising the public hearing as well as the application. In addition, the application was circulated to the city's engineering department, Aquiterra, as well as other key stakeholders in the development process. And in the end, all parties were satisfied that the proposed development shouldn't generate any negative or adverse impacts to the city or to the adjacent residents. And lastly, administration did not receive any public notification or any comment from the public prior to tonight's public hearing. So to conclude, administration supports the application to amend the Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan, the Arbor Hills 2 Outline Plan, and the Land Use Bylaw Amendments. The proposed land use is compatible with the adjacent land uses in the area, maintains the intent of the city's municipal development plan and specifically the growth management policies and objectives, and uses efficient and pragmatic design principles for the design of the subdivision. And with that, administration recommends that council give bylaw C-1212H, bylaw C-1281-4, and bylaw C-1260-99 each three readings. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Any questions for administration at this time, council? There will be another opportunity before we close the public hearing. I don't see anybody ringing in from council, and so we will go to the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. If there was anybody here to speak in favor of the application, we'd invite them to come forward now. Gentlemen, welcome.
Scott Pravitz, Provincial Lands.
And Scott Ross, with Helix Engineering. We didn't have too many concerns. I don't think we got any, any comments from public or anybody else and such. So we did kind of push this one through fairly quickly. It was a kind of reaction to the market, sort of a thing. And so I think for the most part, well, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer. Unless Scott's got anything to add.
Nope, same thing. Better answer questions than ramble on.
Sure, absolutely. Any questions to the delegation? Councillor Thieson.
Well, thank you, Mayor Given, and thanks for being here. Scott, pleasure having you. I just wanted to sort of, to see if you could elaborate a little bit more, Scott, rush us through in a, in a reaction to the market. I know that we're starting to get more houses sold and stuff like that. Do you foresee the next year or so to be fortuitous for home builders or for more residential developments?
Pravitz?
That was taken into consideration. Honestly, though, we, when you look at the Arbor Hills area, area structure plan, to the east is Trader Ridge, which is, you know, 100 and some odd acres of general commercial land. So I mean, there's a lot of commercial designated in that area, and that being on 100th, being a more busy road, more traffic, like, that seemed like that was a better fit for commercial. We do have a three-acre commercial site directly to the, to the east in blue here. So, and then we had, this was eight acres that were rezoning. So we had looked at some market studies and talked to different people in, in the industry, and a lot of the people are saying probably that 10, eight acres of commercial would roughly be about 10 years before it would be viable in that area. So it's, do we wait 10 years or do we start this year and start building homes? So that's, that's the bottom line. We could get going on that quicker than it being commercial.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you.
Also, a 40-acre parcel directly west of this as well, that's also zoned, currently, not zoned yet, but planned to be commercial within the Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan. It's designated as a commercial site. So that was historically from the old, the hospital that was originally there and kind of got shuffled around and now so adjacent to the, to the Catholic school. So it's an ample amount of commercial in the area. I suspect that we may even be here again with more revisions, so.
On the 40 acres.
On the other, the other quarter. Any other questions to the delegation? Gentlemen, I guess I did have one around provision of commercial and essentially, I guess, what I'd call local commercial. You know, that site that will remain, is it a site that would be appropriate for a corner store, gas station? I mean, you know, I guess the old sort of question is, is there anywhere somebody could walk and buy milk? And, and will there be the ability for this neighborhood to still have somewhere that they could walk and go and buy milk?
Yeah, again, that, this, this three-acre commercial site in blue here, we're actually, we'll be coming to you guys right away for development plans. We're going to build a, we're doing it ourselves. We're going to build, um...
A local commercial sort of node.
I don't want to say too much, but yeah. There'll be, there'll be stuff there for, for the, for the neighborhood. Absolutely. And we're doing that ourselves.
We've also got it. There's a, there's a fairly good chunk of commercial actually under construction right now. It's only, I don't know, 400 meters away. So separate sidewalks are constructed. Co-op food stores going into Trader Ridge on the corner of 102nd and 132nd. So lots happening out there.
Excellent. Okay. Councillor Platt?
Um, just for clarification and just to jog my memory, on the commercial site that's there, there's a road above it, I guess, to the north. Does that road extend straight into Trader Ridge then, like the, so people that were in this residential area could just access Trader Ridge without actually going onto 132nd Ave?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So the blue parcel that's there, the road that runs to the north of it and heads east, it's, that's a, if you go into Trader Ridge, you got Storm Pond on the north and another commercial unsold parcel on the south, but you're, yeah, everything within there has got separate sidewalks on both sides, so it's a pretty walkable commercial area.
Thank you.
There you go. Sure. Ms. Pravitz, you would sort of want to introduce that or orient us for it?
Yeah, right. This shows the transportation network for the area structure plan for that area. So I guess this would be...
Right there.
Okay, thank you.
So that would be the road the neighbor could, neighborhood could walk along to get to the co-op?
Yep.
Store that's going in, for example?
I think it's right here.
Okay. Okay. Great. Councillor Thieson?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I actually answered my own question as I was flipping through my notes, so.
Hey, thanks very much, Councillor Thieson. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Council, any other questions to the delegation? No, don't see anybody coming forward. Gentlemen, thanks very much for being here to answer our questions. Available? Was there anybody else that wished to speak to the Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan and associated amendments? Is there anybody else that wished to speak to these land use bylaw amendments for the north area of the city? Again, seeing none. Council, last opportunity for any questions for administration. Don't see anybody ring in, so we'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to business arising. And we've got a whole set of readings to give this, and so who wants to start with the first bunch of business arising? Councillor Thieson?
Somebody's got to do it, right? So I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1212H, being an amendment to the Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thieson. So there's no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Thieson?
Carrying on, I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1212H.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thieson. Any discussion or debate on second reading of bylaw C-1212H? Councillor Platt?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Given. I just wanted to make a comment that I appreciate the, it sounds like there was some good work done between planning and engineering and the developer on this one, so it's nice to see that we were able to do this and make this change. It sounds like fairly fast, so appreciate that. I think it is a good use of land. One of the things that we hear quite often is the Grand Prairie's running out of estate lots, and I think some of these lots will be very nice as they back on the very nice ER that's been set up in that Arbor Hills area. So I'm a big, big fan of that change. Thanks.
Thanks, Councillor Platt. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Thieson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading for bylaw C-1212H at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thieson. So this is a motion to have third and final reading of this land use bylaw, I'm sorry, of this area structure plan amendment here this evening. In order for us to move on to third and final reading at this meeting, this motion that Councillor Thieson's just made must pass unanimously. Is there any discussion and debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here tonight? I see nobody ringing in, so I will call for the vote on the motion to have third and final reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously, and so we can have third reading. Councillor Thieson?
Let's finish this off. I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1212H, being an amendment to the Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thieson. Let's finish off this first third of the things that we have to do associated with this. Thanks very much, Councillor Thieson. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and we'll move on to bylaw C-1281-4, the amendment to the Arbor Hills 2 Outline Plan. Somebody care to make the motion for first reading? Councillor Thieson, quick on the draw.
Might as well. My mic was still active. I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1281-4, being an amendment to the Arbor Hills 2 Outline Plan.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Thieson. No discussion or debate on first reading. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Thieson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1281-4.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Thieson. A motion for second reading. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Thieson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading for bylaw C-1281-4 at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thieson. You heard my spiel before about the requirement to have this motion pass unanimously, otherwise it would come back at a subsequent council meeting. Is there any discussion or debate on having third and final reading? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Councillor Thieson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. And finally, for this portion of the readings, I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1281-4, being an amendment to the Arbor Hills 2 Outline Plan.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thieson. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading of the Outline Plan Amendment? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. And we have one final thing that we need to amend, and that's the land use bylaw. Would somebody care to make a motion for first reading of land use bylaw amendment Councillor Thieson?
Uh, you must be sick of hearing me talk right now, but my mic was still active again. So I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1260-99, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thieson. No discussion or debate on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Thieson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1260-99.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thieson. Motion for second reading. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion passes. Councillor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading for bylaw C-1260-99 at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thieson. This, once again, is one of those motions that must pass unanimously if we want to have the third and final reading here this evening. Is there any discussion or debate on having third and final reading? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. Councillor Thieson, bring it home.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Coach Given, I guess I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1260-99, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Thieson. Third and final reading. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Thanks very much, Councillor Thieson, for taking on the heavy lifting on that one, and to our management and administration team for doing the real heavy lifting behind the scenes to ensure that this got to council this evening. For anybody who's watching, why we have to do so many readings to do one thing, there are about three different levels of planning that need to be amended, and on each one of those levels of planning, to ensure there's appropriate time for discussion and debate, you have to do three readings of a statutory plan amendment. So each of those three levels are statutory plans. And the, having third and final reading was something that we used to automatically just do at a later council meeting. We used to always put them over to the next council meeting, but it meant that the development community had to wait longer. And so we found that we could actually meet the requirements of the Municipal Government Act and do all three readings in one night, but it added that extra step, which seems a little bit redundant of needing that unanimous motion. So for anybody that's watching this evening going, why did they just do all of that? There's a reason, and it's basically because we have to meet the requirements set out by the provincial government, and we're trying to do that in a way as responsive as we can to the demands of industry and our partners. So there you go. That's the little sort of teaching session for the evening, I guess. But that takes us out of our public hearings. We do have one item of unfinished business. That's item 7.1, bylaw C-1367, the Hughes Lake Area Structure Plan. And I don't know if we have introduction from administration on this. So this is one where council had actually passed the first two readings to approve the area structure plan at a previous council meeting, and then it was held back and is to approve the air structure plan at a previous council meeting, um, and then it was held back and is finally here for third and final reading. To have a motion for third and final reading so we can open up discussion and debate. Counselor Minhas?
I'll move the counsel give the third reading by law, sorry. By law thirteen sixty-seven. Being a by law adopted by Hughes Lake area structure plan.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Minhas. So this is a motion to adopt the Hughes Lake area structure plan. Uh, any discussion or debate? Counselor Plott?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Given. I, I've thought about this plan a lot, and unfortunately, I won't be able to vote in, in favor of it. Um, I'm just a little bit disappointed that we didn't put any, um, residential estate in there at all. I think we're really missing the market on that one, to be honest. More I look at that plan, I had to drive through the area a few times. There's some nice wetland areas. There's some beautiful views, and I think we were, we're asking for a lot. I think this is all going to be industrial. A big part of the component of the county is you'll see people buy five or 10 acres, and they'll put a house with a shop on it, and they won't be able to do that anywhere in this area. And I think we're losing a huge part of the market share and opportunity. And we're, we're putting on a lot of land here, so I, I just feel it's disappointing we didn't put any residential estate for, and so without reason, we'll be able to support it.
Thanks very much, Counsel Plott. Obviously, every council member has an opportunity to speak their mind. That's why we get up here and do these things, and not everything passes unanimously, and so, uh, good to speak those points of view. Uh, any other discussion or debate? I'll, uh, just, uh, take an opportunity to say that, uh, recognizing that this is something that actually has a fairly long history. This is, the plan is consistent with the inter-ministerial development plan that was adopted between the city and the county, which sets out the generalized future land uses in the areas that were annexed eventually by the city. Uh, and that plan that was adopted jointly by the city and county identified this as commercial industrial land. I'd also note that there is fairly significant land, uh, directly to the north that's intended to be residential, uh, that administration's currently in the process of bringing forward an area structure plan, uh, for council's consideration. Um, and then the last thing that I would say, because it did, uh, extend, uh, I'm trying to remember whether it went through, uh, into this council term, but certainly through last council term, there was pretty extensive public consultation with the landowners in that area. Uh, and the plan is, is, uh, I think, very reflective of the concerns, uh, priorities and desires of the landowners in the area, so. Um, I believe that the plan is consistent with what was agreed to with the county. It is consistent with our stated intention when we annexed the land from the county, um, and it is consistent with, uh, what we heard from the landowners in a pretty robust consultation process, and for all those reasons, I'll be supporting the plan. Any other discussion or debate? Counsel Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just, uh, sorry, I just had that when I was going through the, um, the by law. There's just a couple of things I wanted to ask about. Um, one of the things that kind of hit me, I guess, is that five percent of this area that is developable is already residential. So just again, there's, there's already a residential market now, and now we're asking them until they basically leave when it's already there, but um, under, on page ten, under the policy, it states no new residential will be permitted. I'm just wondering if we need to make that wording so strong at this point. We're basically saying it, it can happen. I'm just wondering if, if we leave that door a little bit open, maybe there's an opportunity here, but I'm just worried with the wording. If that's maybe a little bit too prescriptive, so I'm just maybe gonna ask administration if that's something that could, or if there's an appetite to maybe just change that, or if that would even make a difference.
Uh, I'll, I'll allow Ms. Downing to give a technical perspective, but I would, uh, just point counsel's attention to the last area structure plan that we amended just a minute ago. Uh, obviously, anything up to the city's municipal development plan is possible to amend, uh, including area structure plans and outline plans. Uh, we saw an area that was intended to be commercial in an area structure plan just flipped to residential, uh, not more than one minute ago. And so that certainly at a, at a technical level is absolutely possible. Um, I'm not sure if Ms. Downing has anything in terms of the context of the, uh, Hughes Lake area structure plan. Ms. Downing?
Thank you. So the way that I would answer that question is to speak to the fact that it's quite difficult to, to find areas to put industrial development. And when we prepared for the annexation, the land area was protected from any sort of development in order to allow the opportunity for industrial. And when you have residential in an area, those residents speak against having any industrial or commercial around them. So that the more residential development that is fragmenting an area leads to the city not being able to have any industrial areas. So this was the one last area, and this is the reason that that area the city was annexed is, which protects some industrial land, because if you look from the north, the east, and the south, opportunities to grow industrial tax base for the city don't exist because there are too many residential neighborhoods that fragment that land, so from the city's perspective, uh, this area, and also, I guess the mayor already spoke to it, but when the annexation was talked about and the growth study was done, the idea was to have at least seventy percent residential development within the entire city basin, thirty percent industrial, commercial. And the math was done in the entire area, and the MDP and the IDP plotted out those areas to keep the ratio with that sort of a balance. So with Bear Creek North ASP that we're starting on now, that area is predominantly residential. And this area allows us to have that balance, and it protects the industrial and keeps it away from the residential, and it's close to the airport and along the highway. So it's a prime location for us to have a large mass of industrial land.
And I can appreciate that there was a, a change earlier. I guess the difference of this is that was a developer that had bought land, planned land, and come in for a change. If a speculative buyer is going to buy a piece of land when the words already say they can't, they're probably not going to go through the process. So in essence, what I'm, what I'm fearing is that we're basically saying there will never be residential in that area, just from our wording. That does concern me for, I'm gonna go back to, I can appreciate that we have land being designated more north. Um, but there's a lot of people in Grand Prairie that head down the highway every day west that would love to have a three to five acre lot, and we're just not giving them an opportunity. This is thousands and thousands of acres of land, and so I just, uh, when we look at our absorption rates for industrial, I think a seventy, thirty split's probably a little bit, um, aggressive tax we ever achieved for us long-term, um, with the amount of market share that's opening up with the county, the MD and every other area, so. Um, I just would hope that we could change our wording to make it up an opportunity. Um, my other, my other question was, um, just in regards to, on page sixteen, on four point one, for the pathways. It says adjacent to our two roadways. I just wanted to clarify, is this on both sides of the roadways or just one side of the roadway?
Ms. Downing?
Mayor Given, our, uh, engineering standard for arterial roads is pathways on both sides of an arterial way, a three meter wide asphalt path.
And so I gue- I guess I'd have concerns with us thinking if that's the smartest use of the city's money long-term to be putting miles and miles of asphalt down roads that may never get used for, for bikes. I don't see a lot of, I, I, as much as I want to encourage bike traffic, I don't know if we're gonna have the best use of those bike lanes, and then we're gonna have to, infrastructure-wise, we have to replace those lanes at some point. Um, I don't know if that's a good use of our community's money. We also would have to snowplow them in the wintertime and look after them. So this is a big cost, and if it's not gonna get fully utilized, I think there's a chance now to go, do we really need to go that extreme on how much we want paths? I think it's a great idea. I just unfortunately don't know if our community fits it. And it's a, it's a big cost down the road when we start coughing about capital projects. So I just consider maybe that we maybe want to look at that as well.
Thanks, Counsel Plott. Any, uh, discussion or debate? Any other discussion or debate? This is a motion for third reading. I don't see anybody, uh, with any discussion or debate, uh, any further discussion or debate. I don't see any motions arising. Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Um, that is all of our unfinished business for this evening. Uh, we had no items under eight under reports, and so I think that takes us straight into committee business. Uh, starting with item nine point one, the community living committee meeting from Tuesday, July seventeenth, and I think Counselor Plott, you might have stepped in to handle, uh, chairing that meeting for us. Uh, so would you care to make the motions to, uh, receive the minutes in the business arising?
Sure, yeah. Thanks, Mayor Given. Um, I guess just first on the, the living meeting, we had, uh, PACE Suicide Prevention and the GP Youth Emergency Society come forth to give some, uh, some amazing things they're doing in the community, so I just wanted to mention that they did that. Um, and then the business arising from it is to, uh, adopt the, uh, minutes as presented.
Thanks very much, Counsel Platt. So we'll, uh, go with that motion to adopt the minutes from the seventeenth. Any errors or omissions that we need to correct? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, that'll take us nine point one one. Alberta Summer Games Bridge Financing. Counsel Plott?
So this was, um, at our community living meeting, they, they had come forward, just there's just a little bit of a delay in some funding, so this bridge financing would just help the summer games get through that, um, for they've got a casino and some other events that are still coming up that they won't have got paid on yet, so. The motion's to have counsel approve seventy-five thousand in bridge financing from the Future Expenditures Reserve to the two thousand eighteen Alberta Summer Game Society to be repeated and followed by February two thousand nineteen.
Thanks very much, Counsel Platt, and thanks for that explanation. Any discussion or debate? Am I correct that some of this, there's also some grant funds that may not have been received for some of the capital improvements that they've already made? Thank you. I don't see anybody in the queue, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Plott?
Um, the next recommendation that comes from committee was that counsel approve large-scale tourism funding for a hundred thousand dollars to the Bear Creek Folk Festival Society for two thousand eighteen. And speaking of this, there was a lot of, uh, there was a decent amount of conversation at the committee meeting about this, and, um, I'd be remiss to speak, uh, Counsel Bressi had phoned me today specifically about this. Um, so I'm not sure if I have an opportunity to speak on what he wanted to mention, or if I should wait till after, or I'm trying to process on that.
Uh, well, so I mean, I think if you're making the motion, yeah, uh, then by all means, I think you need to make the motion, then we'll go into discussion and debate, and, uh, if you want to share, um, uh, the views of another council member who can't be here, obviously, you have to vote your own way, but, uh, if there's something that they want to have expressed, sure, by all means. Sure. So I think you made the motion. Uh, is there any discussion or debate? Counsel Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Given.
Slash Counsel Bressi.
Um, just, uh, Counsel Bressi was, is away on a, on a conference room for work right now in his other job, I guess. And he just had mentioned he's really a fan of, a fan of this, and I, I kind of, I felt we went back and forth as a committee, um, that, you know, the hundred thousand dollars is probably fine today, but maybe looking at what would that look like next year, and maybe trying to find a way to wean off the funding, so. I just wanted to say that on his behalf.
Thanks very much, Counsel Plott. Any other discussion or debate? I don't see, again, I don't see anybody in the queue, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. I think I'm looking for one more. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, we'll move on to nine point one point three. Counselor Plott? You just have to get your microphone again, sorry.
Um, so council, uh, approved large-scale tourism funding of seventy-five thousand dollars to the Grand Prairie Stomp Association for two thousand eighteen. Had a chance to go to the event. They, they did an excellent job again this year, so well done.
Thanks very much, Counsel Plott. Any discussion or debate on the motion, uh, with respect to the Grand Prairie Stomp Association? Again, seeing nobody in the queue, uh, we'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Just with respect to both of those, before we move on, uh, really appreciate both applicants meeting the city of Grand Prairie's requirements in terms of disclosure of their finances, uh, and of their, uh, work to assess the economic impact of their events in our community and the number of visitors that they attract to our community. I think really great examples of, uh, organizations, uh, seeing what the intent behind the city funding is to bring people to Grand Prairie and ensuring that they're doing the work to be able to demonstrate that, uh, that funding's supporting the things that we want to, so thanks very much to both of you for, for doing that. Uh, and nine point one point four, Counselor Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Um, so we had a little bit of discussion about the unfortunate, uh, situation with Greyhound, I guess, closing services across Western Canada. And so the, the council direct the mayor to write a letter to the province expressing the importance of a regional transportation solution for the Peace Region. It was a recommendation that came from committee.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Plott. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, when I went to, thank you very much, Mayor Given, for letting me speak. Uh, when I went to the Northern Alberta Elected Leaders, uh, Session in, in White Court, uh, there was this discussion about, uh, what's gonna happen and how it's gonna take place. I also attended one in Valley View, and, uh, there was word out that, uh, there would be another, uh, bus line taking over, and I see they started yesterday going from High Level all the way to Edmonton, so, uh, maybe service will be improved, maybe it won't, maybe the prices will be cheaper, maybe they won't, but at least there'll be service. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. Counsel Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I, um, I, I was in favor of this, uh, when it came to committee, and I read, uh, the agenda package, but I don't know if it's necessary right now. I know that there are other, uh, businesses that are moving in and stepping in, and I don't know, uh, sometimes we dabble a little bit too much in the private sector, uh, being a public organization. Uh, I don't know if we should be, uh, writing this letter at this time because it seems like the solution is there or is finding its way there for the people who need the service, so I, I won't be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Thieson. Counselor Blackburn?
Mayor Given, um, Counselor Thieson is right. We shouldn't really be dabbling in the areas that, uh, private enterprise. Uh, however, what we're being asked to do here is to express, um, the importance of regional transportation in the area, and, uh, it's possible that the situation will resolve itself. It's also possible that, um, uh, whoever attempts to do this might fail at it. The business might not go the way they hope it to. And either way, uh, it doesn't hurt for the province to know that we really do believe that regional transportation is a very important part of, supporting our residents and the residents in the region around us, and indeed, the entire province. Uh, everybody knows that transportation departments across the province, um, at the municipal level require funding in order to be able to survive. And for us to at least say to the province that, should the time come where this needs to be considered, we're certainly in support of the province being aware and, uh, having, having some concern for the existence of regional transportation.
Thanks, Counsel Blackburn. Counsel Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh, now, uh, correct me if I wrong, I'm wrong, please, someone in the room, but, uh, this is, uh, discussing, uh, the lack of the Greyhound service and now a new busing service to get residents. I wonder if the recommendation is a little vague considering how it came up through the agenda package. Uh, it is talking about the importance of a regional transportation solution for the Peace Region, uh, under the heading of Regional Transportation Services, but are we talking about bus lines? Are we talking about building roads? Are we talking about expressways, freeways, twinning of highways? I mean, we have a, a constant advocacy with the province in talking about some of our major highways, uh, forty-three, forty-three X, forty. We've had some great success, and I think we can continue to do so. I just think it'd be overbanging the drum a little bit, and when you overbang, bang the drum, you sort of fall off the beat. Uh, I think the privatized solution is finding a way. Uh, I think the, I just think this is a redundancy that, uh, we shouldn't be undertaking.
Thanks, Counsel Thieson. Uh, as I just, so like counsel, as I understand the intent, it is specifically to, uh, transportation, um, bus transportation between Grand Prairie and Edmonton and, and other areas north to Grand Prairie. That's what I understood from the committee, and that's certainly how I had, uh, approached the letter. Counsel O'Toole?
Yeah, I'm gonna agree. I think this would be the first time with Chris, uh, Mr. Thieson, that, uh, I think the, uh, I think we can probably delay that letter and give it a month or two to see how it works out, if, if that would be okay with my council fans.
I suppose it depends on how people vote, so.
Just putting the plea out there that I, I think that it would be, uh, a little too early to, uh, judge if the, it's gonna be a success or not. Give it a month, see what, uh, the people are using it or not for freight and for people transportation, and if it's not to our requirements, then maybe we should write a letter. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. I'm looking for one more, counsel. Thank you. And that motion does not carry. Uh, and I think where, is there any other items of business, uh, from that community living committee meeting? Counselor Plott?
Sorry, I haven't chaired a lot of meetings. Apparently, I started telling about the re, the meeting before I started talking about the motions, but, uh, no, it was good to have the not-for-profits come and speak. And the only other thing was that we didn't have our, our quote at the beginning from, from Counsel Thieson, so I, I missed that, so other than that, it was a good meeting.
Thanks very much, Counsel Plott, and thanks for stepping in to, to handle, uh, chairing that meeting. Um, I see item nine point two, Infrastructure and Protective Services, and Counsel Blackburn, I think you're gonna handle that meeting for us.
And I had the pleasure of, uh, chairing the last meeting in Counselor Clayton's absence. And, uh, so I would move that counsel receive the minutes of the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, August seventh, twenty eighteen, as presented.
Thanks, Counsel Plott. Uh, excuse me, Counsel Blackburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors that we need to correct? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, one of the recommendations that came from this committee meeting is, uh, that, uh, and so I would move that counsel approve the Veterans Way as an honorary name to the portion of a hundred and first avenue between a hundred and second street and ninety-eighth street. And this came forward, I, um, I believe most of the counselors have seen, uh, a presentation regarding this. It's, uh, just a matter of finding a way to, um, publicly honor veterans in Grand Prairie. Uh, happens to be on the street where the, uh, the Legion is, proposed by the Legion, uh, very well supported by the neighbors. And, uh, and so, uh, I would urge that we, uh, vote in favor of this honorary naming, which does not change the name of the street, but simply gives it a, uh, uh, nom de plume, so to speak.
So nobody would have to change their addresses on their business stationery or any official Canada Post changes or anything like that?
That's right.
Okay, thanks very much. Uh, any discussion or debate, counsel? Again, seeing nobody ringing in on my little screen here, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, Counsel Blackburn, anything else to highlight from that set of minutes?
Uh, yes, I'll speak briefly to some of the things that went on at the committee meeting. We did have, uh, three delegations, uh, members of the, um, retail community who were hoping to have cannabis retail stores in the community who were, um, not, um, successful in the lottery. Because of the fact that we have a cap of fifteen licenses to issue in the first year. So, um, coming up in a week, or sorry, at the next in a week, or sorry, at the next council meeting will be some discussion with administration and perhaps a recommendation to review that cap. It was a very interesting discussion that we had. There was also a report from administration on options to pave currently unpaved city roads, primarily in the northwest section of the city. And so we were given some information from engineering services regarding the fact that, that most of those roads would be paved at the request of the residents or businesses that are on those roads. So there's no action at this point, it's just a matter of receiving the report for information. The other interesting thing that we talked about was the fact that administration is looking at bylaw, C1064, which is our, sorry, I've forgotten the name of the bylaw. The idea is that they're going to want to separate vehicle for hires from the rest of the bylaw, I guess it's a business license bylaws. Thank you, my mind did go blank for a moment. So the concept is to have a separate bylaw for vehicles for hire. There's still work being done on it. I was very interested to see the, the amount of research that's gone into it, and the fact that it's going to cover off a lot of potential issues that licensing vehicles for hire would have. So we'll be seeing that come to us again. And that pretty much covers the highlights, thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn, and thanks for stepping in to handle that meeting as deputy chair. I think that handles all of our committee business, and that moves on into correspondence. We have two items of correspondence this evening, the first is 10.1, a letter from the town of Sexsmith with respect to Alberta Community Partnership Program, and I'll look to the city manager to introduce that letter.
Thank you mayor Given. The, there's been a heightened level of discussion in the area surrounding the possibilities of regional cooperation. In this letter, the town of Sexsmith is formally requesting our support for their ACP grant application to start a regional growth study, hire a consultant, and start to work on the possibility of a regional growth study. I actually met with the CAO of the town of Sexsmith today for elaboration on this, and I'm convinced that this is a very earnest effort to get people together talking about what growth should look like in the Grand Prairie region. So with that in mind, mister chairman, I would hope that this would be referred to standing committee and get the support of council to offer our support on that application.
Thanks very much, mister city manager, and I guess for council, I think if, if council is supportive of the request that you've seen in the package, I think we could do that as a motion here tonight, rather than sending it down to committee and then back up. It's open for discussion. Actually, I suppose we should have a motion, and if it was a write a letter kind of thing, I think we know the form of that kind of motion, kind of motion, since we just did one. Councillor Thieson?
Thank you very much mayor Given. Actually, I was going to ask that question, couldn't we just do it here tonight? It seems in line with council's values and with the direction that the region is going, and that the province has asked all regions to move towards as far as collaboration. So I would move that council direct the mayor to write a letter of support for a regional growth study grant with the town of Sexsmith.
Thanks. Yeah, I think, I think that meets the intent. Thanks very much councillor Thieson. Any discussion or debate? I'll just say that I really appreciate the town of Sexsmith taking the lead. Obviously, we're not the only ones feeling the pressures of growth in the region. I think that some of the smaller urban municipalities see the need. The county of Grand Prairie has independently finished a bit of a growth study on their own. I know the city of Grand Prairie has one that's been around for quite a while. And I think if there's an opportunity to bring those things together in a, in a way that sees more coordination and collaboration rather than competition would be a great outcome of this. Not to presuppose that's what the outcome would be, but I certainly appreciate the fact that Sexsmith has taken the lead within the region and saying that this needs to happen, and I'm certainly happy to stand behind them in that and support the application. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And then 10.2, mister city manager, we have a letter from the county of Grand Prairie with respect to the Correction Line Area Structure Plan.
Thank you mayor Given, and having talked about the trend toward regional cooperation, I'm afraid this one is not quite as positive a story. This one is a letter from Reeve Boprey to the mayor or to city council, informing us that the Correction Line West Area Structure Plan has been passed and approved by the county of Grand Prairie. As you know, this was a matter that on April 20th came forward to city council that in a, or to a joint council meeting, pardon me, resulted in a mediated session being conducted between the city and the county to see if we could come up with a solution. It actually looked for a while like we could come up with a solution, but on further consideration by the county, it was their determination that the mediation was not successful, and that they did not want to continue. So on July 16th or 17th, they did go ahead and pass the area structure plan, so it has been done now. There is a process in the province of Alberta when a municipality is aggrieved by a application like this being approved by a neighboring municipality, and that requires that the municipality offer a formal objection to the municipal government board. And so there is a decision in front of us now to start a process of objecting, if it's council's desire to do so. There are fairly tight timelines on this, there's only 30 days that's afforded to the neighboring municipality to register their objection. So essentially, we have until this Thursday to do so. So the situation that we're faced with right now, mayor Given, is either to let this stand, which is an option of council, in which case the area structure plan by the county has been approved, and it would go ahead. We have an option, as we exercise tonight, to make a motion at council. If you were sufficiently comfortable to make such a motion, that can be done by council. And the third option is for us to set aside some time for a special council meeting, if you wanted more fulsome deliberation on this matter in order to come up with a considered decision.
Thanks very much, mister city manager. So council saw this in their package, and obviously everybody's well aware of the Correction Line Area Structure Plan and the discussion there. We've participated in the joint meeting with the county, a couple of joint meetings with the county, as well as the mediated session, and so I guess we'd look for some direction on this. I think as the city manager highlighted, there's sort of three alternatives really available to us tonight, I guess at a high order. One would be to receive the letter for information, essentially take no action, and not object to the Correction Line Area Structure Plan that the county has passed. The other would be to, to refer, I get, refer the matter to another council meeting, basically create another opportunity to discuss this, this week, but it would have to happen before Thursday. And then the other one would be to file an objection with the municipal government board, and to use the rights that are given to us under the Municipal Government Act. One question for the city manager, should council choose to file an objection tonight, make a formal motion to file an objection, does that preclude the alternative of coming to some sort of arrangement with the county prior to a hearing? You know, does it, are there other options on the table, even if council chose to exercise its right to put forward an objection?
Thank you, mister mayor. No, the, the city can withdraw its objection at any time. It does start a rather expedited process, so these things tend to start and get dealt with relatively quickly. It's not an inexpensive effort for the city to register, both in terms of direct costs and staff time, but certainly if something were to come out of subsequent dialogue that would cause us to reconsider the objection, we can withdraw the objection at any time.
Okay, so council, those are at a high order, those are, I think, the three alternatives that are available to us tonight. Take no action, and basically allow it to go forward, as was passed by the county. File our objection, and seek to follow that process, and see if there's an opportunity to have any other dialogue with the county in advance of getting to a formal hearing, or to sort of boot it down the road till later this week, and have another council discussion about this. What's your, what's your wish, council? I see councillor Palat in the queue first.
Thanks mayor Given. I guess my, with the sensitivity of the timing of this, I'm wondering, I would like to see us have a conversation about tonight personally, but I'm also wondering if we can, if it's possible to go on camera for maybe just 10 minutes, just to, I feel like we're going to get into some conversations that could be legal of nature, or maybe sensitive of nature, and I just don't know if that's the right form for this, but I'm not sure if that's protocol, if I'm allowed to call it to go into camera for that.
By all means, certainly if there are matters, we don't do it often at council meetings, but certainly that, we have that ability. And so if we wanted to have a motion to go in camera, if there are some questions of that nature, I would accept that.
Okay, well, I would, I guess I'd make a motion that we go into camera to discuss this, and try to resolve an answer tonight.
Okay, so a motion to go in camera for some discussion. That would obviously require us to pause the video and turn off the microphones, that kind of thing, and ask the public who've attended to, to leave the room while council has that in-camera discussion. And the reason that camera, council goes in camera is to ensure that items of legal nature that might be the subject of illegal opinion, or things that are essentially negotiations, that council has the latitude to discuss a position outside of the public view. Any decisions that we make as a result of that discussion have to be made in public, though, so we would go in camera, have a discussion, come back, and then any business arising would happen in the public session as well. So councillor Palat's made the motion to go in camera. I would open for discussion or debate on the motion to go in camera? Any discussion or debate on going in camera? I see councillor Blackburn.
Thank you mayor Given. I do appreciate that an in-camera session would be appropriate in order to, for us to hammer this out. I believe that it would be a rather fulsome discussion, and I would prefer to see us meet separately later this week to deal with it, rather than, than tonight.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn, councillor Clayton?
Although I appreciate your comments councillor Blackburn, I feel like we've had ample opportunity to have a discussion, and at tonight's, if there's an opportunity for us to have a decision out of tonight, based on the timing and the sensitivity of the nature, it's worth giving it 10 minutes for tonight. So I do support the motion, thanks.
Councillor Clayton, councillor O'Toole?
I was, I was going to suggest the same thing, so I'm 100% with this, thank you.
Thanks very much. Anybody else with respect to the motion to go in camera? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and so we'll just take an opportunity to, I think the city manager will identify the staff who are going to stay for the in-camera session.
I will ask all of the staff that's currently present to stay, mister chairman, I believe they're all necessary, and it's part of the deliberative process. Planning staff is here for professional advice, land staff is here for professional advice, our communications manager will be here as well, our chief of staff, and the directors and acting directors to make sure that we get fulsome response.
Thanks very much, mister city manager. So we are in camera, and I'll ask, I don't know, I'll... Thank you, we're back. We're just gonna reset in the council chambers here as we get the media back in, the public back in, and errant council member too that excuse themselves for a second. We'll continue on with our business with respect to item 10.2, correspondence with respect to the correction line area structure plan. At the break, before we exited, council was informed by a letter from the county of Grand Prairie that county moved forward with approval, final approval of the correction line area structure plan. And administration has informed us that should the city wish to object, there is a deadline of the 16th of August to file that objection. Councillor O'Toole?
Yes, Mayor Given, I'd like to make a motion to file a notice of appeal and statutory declaration to the municipal government board by August 16th, 2018.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that? I would just say that I don't think that this is the end of dialogue between the city and the county on this issue. I'd hope that we would still have an opportunity up to, you know, through the process to continue to have an open channel of discussion. Certainly, I'd be open to doing that on council's behalf if that was something council wanted to direct me to do. But I think it's also important to ensure that the commitments and the vision that were codified by the two councils and put in place in our inter-ministerial development plan are supported. And so I think it's, I will be supporting the motion. And I will continue to be open to dialogue with the county and our county counterparts. Thanks councillor O'Toole. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Thiessen, you had some follow-up business?
Yes, I do. Actually, I heard you say something I quite liked, that you'd be willing to engage with our county counterparts. And so with that being said, I would like to, if the will of council is so, I would like to direct the mayor and city manager to be in contact with the REVE and the other CAO in the county and arrange a meeting to discuss this matter further.
Okay, sure. I think that that makes good sense. I think it's an explicit indication of our intent to keep the lines of communication open and that we are not seeing this as a, although there is a formal process that we would have lost the opportunity under the Act if we hadn't filed, that there's an informal process and that local dialogue can continue to happen. I'm happy to do that. And thanks very much for that councillor Thiessen. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote on councillor Thiessen's motion. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I don't think we had any other items of correspondence, and I think that deals with all the, all the two that we had. Onto number 11, delegation business. We had a number of delegations this evening. First, we had the presentation from the games, Alberta Games, Summer Games Host Society. Could I have a motion to receive that for information? Councillor Thiessen?
So moved.
Thanks very much councillor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. The next up was Grand Prairie stomped with respect to their application for funding. I think that that one, they were here speaking specifically to their funding application, which was dealt with as an agenda item. So I don't know that we need to most receive that for information, that their topic was dealt with. And same for the Bear Creek Folk Festival. But there was a delegation, Ms. Lauren and, and her counterpart who came up with respect to community safety. And that may be an item that we would refer to a standing committee or if there's some other action that council wanted to take. Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Sorry, I'm a little louder today. It's a month off, that's what it does to you. There was two people talking here today, obviously, but the room was actually quite full of people who wanted to have that discussion like heard. And they all left, although not speaking. So I do think it's very important that we would direct that part of the presentation, that how the city is going to address the recent crime surge in various locations to the appropriate standing committee.
Sure. Councillor Thiessen, I just wonder if maybe with respect to that referral, can we maybe phrase that in a way that asks for an update on crime trends to the next standing committee? Just, I think it presupposes that there are significant increases, and I appreciate that over the course of the summer, we see things that we might not in the course of winter, but I'm not sure, I don't know whether or not there's a crime surge. Happy to hear from management and administration about crime trends.
Sure. All right, yeah, let's, let's do that. And you know what? I think I did see your chief of police in the, in the gallery as well here today. So hopefully he's still watching this on his iPhone at home or something. But yes, let's, let's arrange that a bit better. So let's refer the, to how the city would address crime and crime trends, recent crime trends within the city to the appropriate standing committee.
Thanks very much councillor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I think that handles all of our delegations that presented this evening. I'm forgetting anybody. We had no notice of motion this evening. And in terms of council member reports, I think councillor O'Toole, you're the only one that let me know that you had something from our external committees and the combative sports commission.
Yes, thank you very much. This last two weeks, two weeks ago, I went down to the United States to the Alberta Association of Boxing Commission and combative sports convention. I've been a part of this commission for about eight years now, and we have never attended. We've been told that it would be a good thing for our commission to attend. And I can say that it was a very good learning experience. We had lots of positives come out of that. And I just highlighted a few here. So we met many medical specialists, neurosurgeons, internal medicine people that have done studies that are part of the New York State Commission, the California, the Nevada commissions. These are the top dogs that spend a lot of time doing research on combative sports, the athletes and some of the rules that apply to them in the athletes, I should say. A number of votes on rule changes that'll be effective January 1st, 2019. The commission is split by boxing and mixed martial arts. So some of these will be in effect January 1st for the boxing, for sure. And, and also some states will be putting them in effect in the mixed martial arts. And we have suggested strongly to our counterparts in the province that we should be doing the same. And I'll talk a little bit about that here in a minute. The process always was on the fighters and the promoters for the last 30 years. And times are changing. And when they had a couple of votes, this is all of North America, the Dominican Republic, Puerto Rico, Aruba and Brazil were in attendance, and Canada, of course. They said that we need to change the way that we think. This is the old school way. We got to look after the health of the competitors. And so this is the way, and there's going to be some stringent rule changes that people aren't going to necessarily be happy with. But people are going to be able to live a lot longer and a lot more, better lifestyle. To stress the importance of all the roles of the commission, sometimes it's just the referee that gets all the stuff or the judges. But our role is, is, as a commission, it's very important. And I'd like to just highlight that when we mentioned that we were from Grand Prairie, Alberta, everybody wanted to meet us. They heard so much good about us. So that's a, that's a good thing. Most of all, the meetings that contained movers and shakers from all over North America, like I said, from the different states and provinces and as well as different countries. I sat in on a judging course while I also had two members of the commission come down with me. So we did a judging course, we did a refereeing course, and I also took in a corner inspection course, which are priceless, actually, the amount of money that would take to go to one of those things. And everything was included in this convention. It was very, very good. Most of all, I was very thankful that the Edmonton Commission in, in many, many years have never really wanted to talk to other commissions in the province. They thought they were the top dog. We had a situation last year that's changed. They got rid of some old school thinking. And so Edmonton was there, Calgary was there, Medicine Hat was there, Central Alberta, which is Red Deer and of Grand Prairie. And of course, I made a couple phone calls to my friends in Wood Buffalo and Cold Lake. And we are planning on coming together as a provincial chat to just make sure that we're all on, on the same page. So the rules in Medicine Hat would be similar to the ones in Grand Prairie. And so that's something that I've been dreaming about for about five years now. And one of the biggest concerns that, there was a lot of time spent on this was waiter, fighters, competitors, losing weight drastically to fight in another weight details, but their brains do shrink, and it does affect the kidneys. You can beat on a person's kidney for four hours, it's gonna have some harm to it, but you lose that much weight, it's got lifetime challenges for the rest of that person's life for that simple one effect. And also, we had representatives from New Brunswick and British Columbia there, so we did get together and chat, and we're all working together. We exchanged phone numbers, and yeah, this was probably one of the better things that we've done as a city, as a commission, as a province in a long time. So thank you for that opportunity, and I'm looking forward to next year because, like I said, the amount of information that was passed on was incredible. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. And I'm sorry, I forgot, Counselor Plot, you're gonna provide an update on the Tri-Municipal Industrial Partnership.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Yeah, we met, we got, the city had the opportunity to host with the MD and the county this time for a recent meeting, and we had a presentation from Ryan Conawalak, the Regional Director of the Alberta Transportation Reading Region, and so he gave us a little bit of an update on some stuff that's happening out south on our highway. The first phase being 5.5 kilometers is supposed to be getting paved from around the dunes access to twin the highway towards a bridge, and they threw out the number that the twinning from the city to Norbord is approximately $100 million. Unfortunately, the bridge still is sitting on the unfunded list for total twinning from the highway, and they haven't done planning study for twinning from a road from Norbord to Richie Way yet, but you know, when he talked about it, he sounded with some confidence that the stuff is starting to bubble and it's starting to happen behind the scenes, so that was good to hear. It was nice that we've been working on getting an area structure plan started, and the contracts are now signed, they were awarded to O2 and Helix, so there was a little bit of a local flavor in there, but the ESP process will now start, and the timelines are to hopefully have it done here by Christmas, which seems a little aggressive, but hopefully they can stick to those timelines, but either way, it's nice to see that we're moving forward with some stuff on the tri-muni.
Great. Thanks very much for the update, Counselor Plot. Were there any other council members with rewards from external agencies they wanted to provide? Seeing nobody ringing in, then maybe Counselor Thieson, if you want to provide a council member update, we'll do roundtable.
Sweet. I don't have much to say. I was just returned from a month-long father-son road trip down to Northern California and the states in between, the provinces north of the border here, our neighbors. I did have one event that I managed to come back to and take in as requested, was the Camp Heela Heart Luncheon for sponsors, and if you're not aware of what Camp Heela Heart is or does, it's something that the city actually funds through our community, I guess, grants programs and community group funding. Essentially, they help children who are experiencing grief at some point in their life come together in a camp setting outside, and to be able to express those feelings amongst each other while also having a camp experience. Most of it, it's all not-for-profit, and most of it goes to disadvantaged people who might not otherwise have access to those types of services or outreach resources, but I tell you, one thing is more powerful than any is reaching out to a peer and somebody who knows exactly what you're going through, and that's a service that this camp is able to do for two weeks every summer for a bunch of kids who have either lost a parent, a grandparent, sibling, or experiencing divorce within their family. So this is the fourth time that I've gone to give greetings on behalf of the city, and it will continue to go. They gave me a broken bowl, a symbol of what was once whole can be put back together again, and it's always a great little presentation, and I love it when the kids put their elbows on the table at lunch, because I call them all out on it, because they know what the deal is, and then everyone starts singing a song, and they have to run around the cabin because, yeah, they're just not allowed to put their elbows on the table, but it's fun to watch, and it's fun to get those kids into that. So it was truly an honor, a nice little ease back into the work and busy life of a council, and yeah, I look forward to getting busy once more here as we move forward.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. Counselor Blackburn?
I actually have nothing to report. It's been a relatively quiet summer for me, and I do look forward to picking up speed again now that we're back in session.
Absolutely. Thanks very much, Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Given. As well, I've had a pretty relaxing last two weeks, I guess, as far as council stuff goes. I did have, we do have a meeting Wednesday morning, which is for the Downtown Association to start hiring a new director for that, which is going to be kind of weird, so, and we're all familiar with Helen Rice usually sitting around this table, but it's gonna be weird to go to a downtown meeting at some point without Helen being there, and I guess, you know, that's gonna happen here eventually, so that's, you know, it's gonna be somewhere that's coming up here that we've been discussing.
Thanks very much, Counselor Plot. Counselor Minhaus?
Thank you, Mayor Given. It's always the same thing for me, is running around all over the place, Edmonton, Calgary, Vancouver, Ottawa, whatever, but we did do function to cut even on our football, what do they call it?
Grandson?
Yeah, Grant, new football field, and that was a very nice thing has been done. Yeah, Grant Spence, thank you. And also, the opening ceremony for the Summer Games, that was very interesting, and raining day, and we had lots of people there. That was the best thing for Grand Prairie, which is I do appreciate the organization and Lionel's team and everybody else, all volunteer work, and it was great. So that's all I had done.
Thanks very much, Counselor Minhaus. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Not much else to follow up, other than thoroughly enjoyed volunteering at the games, whether it was cutting up food and preparing food with Rotary, or being in the opening ceremonies, and had an opportunity to present medals at boys' soccer, and you know, it was, I think we went fairly unscathed considering the weather that potentially was there. Had an opportunity to also attend the Street Performers Festival during that time, and I think the committee should be commended on the work that they did to quickly change locations and sort of keep the awesomeness of the event intact. It was still a well-attended event considering the quick change and the concern of weather and all the other things going on in our city. That weekend was extremely busy in our city, and the street performers did a great job. So congratulations to Counselor Blackburn and the entire committee and group that works very hard on that. And other than that, I had a great break and looking forward to getting back to it. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor O'Toole?
Well, I had a busy two weeks, so. Just this last weekend, we did the XFC 19 Monsters Collide Combat of Sports Commission-regulated MMA event, and it went off without a hitch. And I thank all the people that were involved and our new administration for helping us get things together. They did a wonderful job, so thank you. There was a number of items that I attended on behalf of Mayor Given, and if you haven't filled his role for a time or two, he's got a very, very busy schedule most times. I've got two pages of events that I went to, and most of them were to cut ribbons, or present, or whatever, on behalf of the mayor, and all kudos to you. Thank you for the job that you do. Just a couple highlights, there was an opportunity to tour the CKC grandstands, and I think a number of councillors were there. We got to go there before anybody else had actually walked through there, and it was great. As part of a little process that I did at the games, I wanted to ask all the athletes that played on that field what they thought, and the stadium, and the grandstands, and their answers were, this is way better than Calgary, this is way better than Edmonton. They love the grass. So kudos to the, for making that happen. It's a different grass than they're used to, so this is the more modern, softer landing grass, I guess. Other than that, I attended the Reading University Grad, Mind Over Matter, or Metal Grad, and CIA Summer Camp Grad, to say a few, but I spent most of my time with the Alberta Summer Games, serving food from 5:00 in the morning until about 10:00, 10:30 at night. It was well worth it. It's amazing. People from different games were there. They couldn't figure out how we fed about 2,700 people in, at 6:00 in the morning through 3:00 in the afternoon. So we did it, and it wasn't me. It was the team that we had, and a very, very good team. And I just want to mention a couple kudos. Everything that we used for dishes was environmentally friendly, biodegradable, and it was the first games to be that way. So Grand Prairie set the bar there. And yeah, I don't want to talk anymore. Thank you very much. You can read my little booklet in the minutes. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole, and thanks very much for taking on those extra responsibilities as deputy mayor while I was away. Counselor Blackburn, you had an additional item?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm not sure why I would have forgotten this major event that happened over my summer. Thank you to Counselor Clayton for mentioning it and for acknowledging that went well. I just wanted to mention that the Street Performers Festival Association was very, very appreciative of the work that various members of city administration did to help us find a location to be able to avoid the torrential rain that we dealt with on the weekend of the festival. So it's much appreciated, and I'm sorry that I neglected to mention it earlier.
Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. No worries there. We managed to catch it in the end. Again, my thanks to Counselor O'Toole and the other council members who picked up some of the my duties while I was away. I had a great time with my family in Europe and visiting some family members in Prague. Just so that you don't think I was only enjoying European culture, I did get a chance to meet with the, Prague is a large city, and so they have sort of a borough system, and so I got to meet with the deputy mayor of Prague 7, which is the borough that we're in. He's also on the Prague City Council as well, and so it was interesting to talk about their challenges that they face and their sort of structure. They do run a party system at the municipal level, which was interesting to chat about, but also in terms of their responsibilities, it was interesting, he related something which wouldn't be unfamiliar to members of this council, that he and his group ran on a certain thing about how they would sort of change the education system in Prague, and when they got elected, they realized they couldn't do that because it wasn't their responsibility. Not the first time that that's ever happened to any municipal elected official, but he did highlight that in terms of education, the municipality actually handles all of the infrastructure, so the municipality handles the schools, which was kind of interesting to see, and the school buildings. So they had influence there, but not in terms of the programming like they thought they might have had. They have sort of a mixed system where the central government, you know, the national government or state government handles sort of major roads, and the Prague city handles other roads, and then the local borough handles development on other standards of roads, so sort of arterial collector local roads and different responsibilities, which seemed really complicated. And it was also interesting that one of the ways that they influence development is that the city actually owns a significant percentage of the ground floor commercial spaces, or the borough does, and so they actually influence it by recruiting specific types of businesses to come in, because then what I think is a sort of planning commission handles development permits, and it's outside of the municipality's sort of control, but the city itself influences the development of their area of Prague, because they actually own the buildings and can recruit the businesses to come into it. So it was interesting to see, but since I've been back, I did, for council information, did have an opportunity. I was in, Aqua Terra has started their strategic plan development. I was contacted through Aqua Terra to meet with the consultant that they brought in to do some of the stakeholder engagement with that, so a member of the Aqua Terra board and their consultant met with me here at City Hall. I believe they're doing the same with other shareholders. They said that they had met with Mayor Claude and Sexsmith, Reeve Boprey and the CAOs. I think we're meeting with Bob as well. Part of my advice was, though, that in terms of the shareholder perspective, I think that there's room for all of council to be engaged in that, and that was part of my advice to them, and so they took that hard, I think, and there will be more engagement of the shareholders, all three of us, all three groups of us, as we go forward. And so good to see Aqua Terra, though, doing that step. It's my first time that I remember them doing that kind of engagement opportunity to develop a strategic plan, and so I think the message, the message that the shareholders have passed to Aqua Terra about wanting to have more involvement in the strategic direction of the company, not the operations, but the strategic direction, has been heard loud and clear, and so it's good to see that start to get underway. Also, last Friday, I don't, we have lots of long-term employees at the state of Grand Prairie, and they move on to different opportunities and retirements, and so I don't obviously take time to mention everyone, but my executive assistant, Bernie Benson, has recently retired, and on Friday, we had a going-away event for her, and completely in alignment with Bernie's personality, for those of you that know her, she had a roast where she actually invited a number of speakers to roast her, and it was highly enjoyable for all of us. I'm not sure how enjoyable it was for her, but it was great for all the rest of us, although from the smile on her face, it looked like she really appreciated that, and I just, having worked with Bernie so closely for my time as mayor, and I'm knowing that she has been here just about my entire time on council, I just wanted to sort of highlight her service to, and assistance to me personally over that time. And with that, I think that's all the items I wanted to highlight. We're adjourned. Thank you.